All right, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this village board meeting to order on Monday, March 3rd, 2025, and ask if you would all please rise and join the village board in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would that clerk please call a roll?
Trustee Baldino?
Here.
Trustee Dunnington?
Here.
Trustee Schwingback?
Here.
Trustee Bertucci?
Here.
Trustee Tenalia?
Here.
Trustee Grassi?
Here.
Trustee Labads?
Here.
Trustee Shirley?
Here.
President Hayes?
Here.
First item on the agenda is the approval of minutes, and we have two sets of minutes to approve tonight. The first is from our village board meeting on February 18, 2025. Any changes or passes?
Pass, please, Mayor.
Passed by Trustee Grassi and Trustee Schwingback. Any other changes?
I would move approval of the minutes.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Labad, second by Trustee Tenalia. Anything else from the board or the audience saying none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we have the minutes from our joint meeting with the Park District on February 22nd, 2025. Any changes or passes?
Pass.
Passed by Trustee Shirley and Trustee Schwingback.
And I move approval of the-
And by, and by Trustee Dunnington.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Trustee Grassi.
I move approval of the joint Village Park District meeting from February 22nd, 2025. Second.
Motion by Trustee Grassi, second by Trustee Baldino. Anything else from the board or the audience saying none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we move on to the accounts payable, and I'll call on Trustee Bertucci.
Mayor, I'll move to approve the check warrant register for the check dated 2/28/25 in the amount of $1,745, 287, and 10 cents.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Bertucci, second by Trustee Schwingback. Any questions or comments from the board? Anything from the audience saying none? Roll call.
Trustee Bertucci?
Yes.
Trustee Schwingback?
Yes.
Trustee Labads?
Yes.
Trustee Baldino?
Yes.
Trustee Grassi?
Yes.
Trustee Dunnington?
Yes.
Trustee Shirley?
Yes.
Trustee Tenalia?
Yes.
President Hayes?
Yes.
Well, next, under recognitions and communications, we have a very special presentation and recognition here this evening of one of our perhaps longest, very close to the longest standing employee here in the village. Thirty-seven-year employee Steve Malaney is a proud recipient of the National Award, recognizing him for outstanding effort and performance in the area of public right-of-way management and innovations developed in the management of utility permits and processes. And Steve was recently awarded the Public Works Association Professional Manager of the Year Right-of-Way Award. So Steve, if you'll join me up front for just a second. Just a little bit more about Steve. Steve Malaney began his career with the village in 1987. He started as an electrician and worked his way up to traffic unit foreman in 2004. He obtained public manager and public administration certificates from the University of Madison, Wisconsin, and was promoted to public services coordinator in 2009, a position he still holds today. Steve serves as a connection between utilities, utility companies, public works, and our residents. He primarily represents the village with all necessary permits for repair, replacement, and relocation of all utility companies serving the community, mainly AT&amp;T, Comcast, ComEd, and Nycor Gas. Again, this National Award recognizes Steve for his outstanding effort and performance in the area of public rights-of-way management and innovations developed in the management of utility permits and processes. So Steve is really, he's an outstanding employee, representative of the many men and women who kind of serve behind the scenes. You know, they don't get recognized publicly all that much, but this is a great recognition and reflection of his outstanding service for so many years. And so I'm so grateful to be able to present this to you again in a public forum that the community can really recognize and appreciate all the efforts that you've done for the community for the past 37 years. So Steve, again, congratulations on behalf of the village board and all of the residents that we represent for your 37 great years of dedicated service to our community. So congratulations.
Thank you.
You want to say a few words?
No.
Okay. He's a public works guy, isn't he? Okay. Well, thank, do you want to take this with you? All right. Right, there's no other recognitions or communications, and so we'll move on to citizens to be heard. And I think I just have one blue card from an individual who wants to speak on an item not on the agenda. That's Ronald Stolberg. Mr. Stolberg, you're just reminded of the three-minute timeline.
In 1984, the FDA said, "Any possible doubts, whether or well not founded, about the safety of the vaccine cannot be allowed to exist. In the view of the need to assure that the vaccine will continue to be used to the maximum extent consistent with the national's public health objectives. Accordingly, because of the importance of the vaccine and maintaining public confidence in the immunization program that depends on it, good cause exists to issue these amendments as the final rule effective immediately." And they approved the vaccine. Cook County Health Department measures its success as if it's paid dependent on it by how many vaccines it delivers, how many prescriptions it fills, and how many medical procedures it performs, with no consideration whether this is making people healthier or sicker. Cook County Health Department is unhealthy and abusive. In January 2020, no, January 2022, Rachel Rubin, senior medical officer of the Cook County Health Department, banned unvaccinated people from exercising in health clubs and eating in restaurants, forcing us to exercise out in the cold winter, to swim, exercise, and play basketball. There was excessive data showing that the COVID vaccines did not reduce COVID infection or transmission, and that the injections were causing harms. Exercise is healthy. Vaccines are unhealthy. Vaccines make people sick. Vaccines cause pain, injury, and death. Whether eating in a restaurant is healthy or unhealthy depends on what you eat and how much you eat. Please fire the Cook County Health Department. Unless we put medical freedom into our constitution, the time will come when medicine will organize into an undercover dictatorship to restrict the art of healing to one class of men and deny equal privileges to others. The Constitution of this republic could make special privilege for medical freedom as well as religious freedom. This was said by a Pennsylvania congressman, Benjamin Rush, over 200 years ago, who signed the Declaration of Independence. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Stolberg. Well, certainly, there are many different opinions on vaccines, and I'm not going to share my opinion here this evening, but your comments seem to be directed towards Cook County, and so they have open meetings as well. And so I would certainly encourage you to voice your concerns with the Cook County elected officials as well. Are there any, is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the board on items not on the agenda? All right, seeing none, we'll close the citizens-to-be-heard portion of the agenda and move on to the consent agenda. Are there any members of the board who wish to remove an item on the consent agenda? Seeing none, any members of the audience wish to request that an item on the consent agenda be removed? Seeing none, I would move back to the board and entertain a motion.
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Labad, second by Trustee Baldino. Any questions or comments from the board or from the audience? We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Trustee Labads?
Yes.
Trustee Baldino?
Yes.
Trustee Shirley?
Yes.
Trustee Grassi?
Yes.
Trustee Schwingback?
Yes.
Trustee Dunnington?
Yes.
Trustee Tenalia?
Yes.
Trustee Bertucci?
Yes.
President Hayes?
Yes. We move on then to new business, and we do have three items to consider tonight. The first is a consideration of a report of a campaign contributions ordinance complaint. And pursuant to our village code, we followed all of the procedures, which our village attorney will outline once we received this formal complaint. And so with that, I will turn it over to our village attorney, Hart Passman.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, good evening, members of the board. Mayor Arlington Heights has a, I'll call it a unique ordinance. Not many communities have their own local campaign contributions regulations. The village does have an ordinance and has had one for a few decades. And this, this agenda item is an outgrowth of that ordinance. Our memorandum, our report, is in the agenda packet. I know the board has, has had a chance to review it, is in the public agenda packet as well. But as summarized in that, I'll just talk about what the code says. There, in pertinent part, there are maximum contribution limits applicable to those who seek an elected village office. The maximum contribution for a given cycle for donations by an individual is $500, and by organization is $1,000. The code sets forth an enforcement procedure that brings us to this, this agenda item tonight. Under our code, if someone files a complaint that of an alleged violation of the campaign contributions ordinance, that is filed with the village manager, who then forwards it functionally to my office. The code is written with the in-house counsel, but as the board knows, that petition was eliminated in favor of our village attorney's office approximately four and a half years ago. And so then the attorney is supposed to investigate the allegations of the complaint and then to issue a written report to the village board. The village board then takes, takes that report, that's what we're here tonight, and can then determine whether or not any action should be taken based upon its own ultimate determination whether or not there was a violation of the campaign contributions ordinance. In this case, and I'll just summarize briefly the report that's in your packet, the village did receive a complaint filed by Mr. Keith Moons on January 31st of this year. Mr. Moons filed a complaint alleging violations by the campaign of current village trustee candidate Michelle Hunter at the time concerned in-kind contributions made by the Illinois Republican Party. Mr. Moons submitted that to the village manager's office and forwarded it to me. I then, as part of my investigation, reached out to Mr. Moons, let him know. I let Ms. Hunter know as well. Mr. Moons filed an amended complaint with my office on February 4th, adding allegations regarding a $1,000 contribution made to Ms. Hunter's campaign by a Ms. Barbara Bly. I reached out to, I offered Mr. Moons the opportunity to present additional information or documentation. We did, and he did take me up on that. I then offered Ms. Hunter the opportunity to provide documentation or argument to me, which she did as well. I gave Mr. Moons his complaint at the opportunity to rebut that. He did provide me with a written statement. All of these are in attachments to the report, so they're there for the board and the public to review. In summary, after reviewing the information presented to me and some of my own research of what I, what's available to me through the State Board of Elections website, it's my determination that there has not been a violation of our campaign contributions ordinance. And basically, it's my understanding that the contributions made to the committee from the Illinois Republican Party were in fact made prior to the trustee race that Ms. Hunter is currently in. It was made for a prior state representative race. And so, and our code doesn't touch contributions to other campaigns or other races. And as to the contribution from Ms. Bly, I did receive unrebutted evidence that the check written was in fact representative of donations of both Ms. Bly and her husband. As I noted in my report, although our code and state law does not speak to circumstances involving a joint check, there is some guidelines I think are instructed from federal regulation, which provides that when there's a written declaration of the, the true nature of the donations, that that is permissible under federal election law. And so for those reasons, as set forth in my report, I've determined the complaint is not sustained. I do concur with a suggestion that Mr. Moons made, however. I do think it would be beneficial for Ms. Hunter's campaign to take all steps practicable to correct the reporting on the State Board of Elections website. And so I've set forth that recommendation in my report. Certainly, Mayor, happy to answer any questions that you or the board may have regarding any of these matters.
All right, thank you, Mr. Passman. I do concur with your analysis and recommendation and determination that there was no violation of the village's campaign contribution ordinance in all respects. But I do also believe that there should be corrective action taken to file amended report to correct any problems that the state might have with respect to reporting. And so I want to give Ms. Hunter an opportunity to just update us in terms of any corrective action that she has taken to this point. So, Ms. Hunter, please.
Thank you so much, and thank you to the village board for allowing me to address this agenda item. First, I want to say that as an attorney of 23 years, I would never do anything to jeopardize my law license. I have taken an oath, and I take that very seriously. And I just want you to keep that in mind as I lay out the timeframe of how the complaint and the resolution ensued. On January 31st, Keith Moons filed a campaign contributions ordinance complaint against my campaign based on Illinois GOP in-kind donations. I was out of the country at the time. When I was back, I contacted the village attorney, Mr. Hart Passman. He returned my call. And then I received an amended complaint by Mr. Moons for Stephen Barbara Bly's $1,000 donation. I sent responses on February 7th from the Illinois GOP attorney that explained that these in-kind donations related to my state rep race, not my trustee race. And I also sent, as the village attorney, Mr. Hart Passman, said, a letter from Mr. and Mrs. Bly attesting to the fact that the contributions were in fact $500 each on a joint account. Then I didn't hear anything for about two weeks, and I reached out to village attorney, Mr. Hart Passman, and asked him what is the status. On that same day, I was contacted by Christopher Plasek from the Daily Herald as to what was happening with the complaint. And that means that somehow the complaint, unless that's public knowledge, was leaked to the Daily Herald. The next day, I received a 25-page report from village attorney, Mr. Hart Passman, finding that the complaint was not sustained, but nevertheless, the Daily Herald had still issued an article stating that the complaint was, you know, at large being investigated, and there was no mention of the fact that it was not sustained. That's the timeline that raises certain questions. Now, I want to turn to the actual recommendation by the village attorney, Mr. Hart Passman. Basically, as we said, and as he acknowledged, the complaint is not sustained. However, he does concur with Mr. Moons' suggested remedy, which is that I file amended reports with the ISBE, which is the Illinois State Board of Elections, as necessary to reflect the true nature and timing of these contributions. The purpose and intent of the village's ordinance is best served by accurate reporting of contributions made to candidates for village office. When it, as it pertains to Barbara and Steve's campaign donations to my account, we have changed those with the ISBE. However, regarding the Illinois GOP in-kind donations, I respectfully object to that amendment for the following reasons. When I filed my paperwork to run as trustee, I filed an amended D1. That means I switched from running for state rep to trustee. John Fogerty, the Illinois GOP, explained that the in-kind donations were only for my state rep campaign, not for my trustee campaign. He also said, and I quote from his letter, "I duly and timely reported these in-kind donations," which means I complied with all requirements of the ISBE. As a result, there is no mistake, no error, no violation of either the ISBE requirements or a village ordinance. And to the contrary, my campaign and my campaign treasurer of over 30 years, we followed the letter to the law. Therefore, if there's no violation, I reiterate, the complaint was not sustained, then there is no remedy. For those of you who don't know, the ISBE is independent of the village. It has its own requirements. And so my compliance with the ISBE means that there's simply nothing else to correct. Further, a recommendation that I amend my ISBE filings is not only an overstep of village authority, it's highly appropriate and sets a dangerous precedent. Again, as an attorney of over 23 years, I took an oath, and I take my law license seriously and would never jeopardize it. So in closing, the handling of this complaint raises more questions than answers. As a candidate and as a resident, I believe we need transparency, integrity, and accountability. Ultimately, this experience regarding the handling of the complaint illustrates a prime example of why I'm running for trustee. Thank you.
Right, Ms. Hunter, before you sit down, you did say that you did file an amended report with respect to the Bly donations.
Correct.
Okay.
And there's no, the deal is really with the Illinois GOP. I can't do anything, I have to file when I receive them. They were delayed. It wasn't a mistake, it wasn't an error. There's nothing to correct. What it is, is delayed filing on the behalf of the Illinois GOP. When I received that, I did my due diligence by filing. There's nothing else to do. So to go backwards and say this is retroactive makes no sense when the ISBE knows I'm in compliance.
Yeah, and I'm not disputing that, and I'm not in a position to dispute it tonight. I haven't dealt with the reporting under the state election code since 2013, to be honest with you. So I don't know what the updates are, what the requirements are. But I, I believe that you've taken corrective action with respect to at least the Bly donations, and so I appreciate that. And at least in my mind, I don't believe that any further action is necessary. So at least in my mind, I would concur with the village attorney's recommendation and determination that there was no violation and that the complaint is not sustained and that there is no further action necessary. So that would be my recommendation to this board as well. Any further comments from the board? Trustee Labad?
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Hunter, for your report. Thank you, Mr. Passman, for the report. I appreciate hearing all of this. I just have a question. It just has to do with the, the party contribution. Is it usually delayed like that? I've never had to deal with it, so I am just curious if that is-
No, I don't think so, honestly. I have no idea. John Fogerty, the Illinois GOP, said, "I have no idea why this is so late." It does relate back to October, but as the ISBE says, "You report when you receive," and that's when I received the in-kind donations. And so when I received that, it's not usually that delayed. I don't know what the problem with that is and why there was a delay. But a delay is not a mistake or an error or a problem. It's just more a delay, as we said. So I, yeah, I don't know. I, you know, and when you file an amended D1 and you, you know, you go from one race to the next, then sometimes these kind of things can happen.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments from the board? Trustee Schwingback?
Thank you, Mayor, just a quick one, Ms. Hunter. Randy, I had asked you the question a week ago. And the only thing I, and I appreciate you coming today. So when you, when you filed that amended D1, and I don't know if you had any contributions that was in your campaign fund-
Prior to?
Yeah.
That I, yes.
Yeah, so the only question that I had asked Mr. Echlo is, was there any money in, in your prior fund that you're going to be using for this race?
Yes, and that's perfectly allowable, about 1,900.
Right, and I, and I'm, how much was it?
About 1,900.
Okay, and I, because I was-
A lot.
I was assuming that there were no contributions left in there that would have exceeded our ordinance for this race.
Right, absolutely not. And, and as you pointed out, Arlington Heights is unique in the fact that they have these contribution limits. Not many places have that. So I have very zealous donors, and I had to tone that down.
Right, okay, I appreciate that, thank you.
Any other comments from the board? We do need a, a motion, right, to accept the report?
I have a question.
Okay, hold on one second.
Yeah, I think it'd be appropriate to, I mean, accept the report and either-
And direct that no further action be taken.
Take no, no formal action. Obviously, it's up to the will of the board if there's an alternate motion to make.
Okay, Trustee Dunnington?
Thank you. Could you share when you did update the information on the website for the donation?
My campaign treasurer did that immediately after the Bly's submitted the letter attesting to the fact that it was $500 individual donations. And so that was done, gosh, I don't know, probably a few days afterwards.
Okay. And, and why couldn't you also update the donation that was, that where you could explain that the mailer was for the, your representative race?
I can update it. I don't need to because I'm not in violation.
So you just prefer not to?
Well, we're not in a position of arguing at this point.
It's village, yeah, it's apples and oranges. It's village versus ISBE. There's no, nothing to clarify.
Okay. Anything, Trustee Grassi?
Oh, thank you. I guess I just had a comment and maybe a bit of a question. I just want to say that public trust in our local government depends on honesty, transparency, and commitment to following the laws we are entrusted to uphold, and mistakes happen. I get that, mistakes happen, we all do that. But when they do, responsible candidates correct them swiftly. So I'm grateful that you did correct that for the Bly's. However, when campaign violations remain unaddressed even after notice, it does raise concerns, and I think that's part of what's happening, not just about oversight, but also about accountability. And I, I hear you, and I hear the mistakes. I hear that you connected both of them together. But the appearances of it, I think, are what brought this here. And that's unfortunate. I'm grateful that you made the one correction. And this isn't about partisanship. I just want to say that, you know, for some reason, I'm not sure the history of why this ordinance came about. It was long before I was here. I don't really understand that. But for me, it's not about partisanship, it's really about integrity. And if we really expect our residents to trust we, the elected officials, we must first demonstrate that we take our own role seriously. So that was just really my concern with bringing this here. And compliance with campaign laws isn't just a technicality, it's a reflection of respect for the process and the people we serve. And I guess I would just urge you to put a note in the GOP donation, even though you don't want to correct it, just because otherwise, I think what happens is it looks like it is incorrect. I know that you were able to present the examples of how it was a mistake, and that donation from the Bly's was corrected. But if, if there's not even a note put in the Republican Party, it just appears that you are violating the municipal code. But I thank you for coming, Ms. Hunter.
Am I allowed to respond or no?
Well, let me just respond, because, you know, we're, we're arguing with this individual. We're not experts on the campaign finance disclosure and reporting laws. I'm not, I am certainly not. And so her opinion is that she doesn't need to do it. I don't know if you're qualified, I don't know if Trustee Dunnington is qualified to say that she is, and to argue that she prefers not to, or she chooses not to.
Or that it's a mistake.
It's our position.
It's not a mistake.
It's not our position to do that.
I'm not in, I'm in compliance. There's no mistake. You referred to it as a mistake, there's no mistake.
Yeah, so we're not, we're not here to argue with this. The, the village attorney has said the complaint is not sustained. He's found no violation. I concur with that.
Mayor, may I?
Please.
May I ask, Mr. Passman?
Yes.
Is, is, I have, I have a question for clarification. Is no mistake because it was corrected or because there was no mistake? Because you had the letters to, to define what the reason was for those donations?
Yeah, I, I'm not, I can't speak to the state law requirements of reporting. My, my province is the village code. And it is ultimately, the village code is concerned with whether there was a donation made in excess of the amounts for a trustee campaign or a mayor role campaign. And I'll like to be visual here. My finding is that the donations that are in question were not made in excess of the amounts in the code for village, village office. I can't, I can't speak to whether and how, the timing, whether of, of the donor in this, this case or of the candidate, because that's a matter of state law. So, and which is not to say that I question what Ms. Hunter is saying about how that works. I'm saying that's not, that's not within the code. So I, the information I have indicates to me that the donations made for this race were not in violation of the caps.
I have one question. So let's say she did not, was not running for state representative. If the Illinois, if the, if the GOP had made that donation as a trustee, would that have been an incorrect donation?
If there were donations made either in cash or in-kind for a village trustee can, for that race?
Yes.
Then, yes, in excess of $1,000, it would have been a violation.
So I think that is why it was alerted, because it appeared incorrect. So I think that is why it was alerted, because it appeared incorrect, but once explanation was provided, it was shown that that came from your previous. I understand that, and that's where I see the mistake is, because by all appearances, it appears that it was not appropriate. But when you clarified and gave the, the reason for it, I understand that. And that's where I was just saying, you know, and I, I have done the other side, so I do know some of those, right? But I think that combining the two is what made some of this a little, little messy.
Sure. It's still not a mistake. It's just a delay. It's different. It's not a mistake.
All right, we're not here to debate that. Trustee Labadz.
Thank you. I just want to mention, and this is not arguing any of this, but it might be of interest to our residents, is that I think, I know I was on the board, Mayor Hayes, you would have been, and, and Trustee Tanalia, I'm not sure if anybody else was, Trustee Baldino, just by, just a little historical context, is that we did have a robust debate about whether, you know, when we increased the rates from 250 per individual and 500 to, you know, an organization, and as, as was mentioned earlier, it is unusual, we are an unusual community, that we actually decided that we would keep a cap on it. But it was something we really did discuss and talk about, and I just think that it's something that the residents might find of interest.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I agree.
Right. Trustee Tanalia.
Thanks, Mayor Hayes. Hart, can you, or Randy, can you reference back at all? What is the difference between what we set as our highest level compared to what Ms. Hunter was able to do when she was running as a state rep? I mean, what's the amount difference?
I, I don't know that. I'm fairly certain that the state caps are much higher.
That I know.
Yeah, but what exactly it is, Trustee Tanalia, I don't have that information.
But it's, it's quite a bit higher, right?
That's, that's, that's an anecdote.
I think it's 6,900.
That, that number sounds vaguely right. I'm not, I don't know, but it's a lot, it's a lot more.
I bet she knows.
I would...
Yeah, she's correct.
Yeah, okay. And so it's, it's understandable when you switch and you have one kind of a campaign going on and then another one happens, and I, I get it. And what Trustee Labadz said is accurate. I was on the board when we switched this, because prior to what, what the numbers are now, it was half. And so now it's a little bit easier for those of us who are doing these things to gather funds a little bit quicker, a little bit easier. It's still not easy. It's horrible. But thank you for your hard work on this.
That's my pleasure.
And thank you for coming, Ms. Hunter, for sharing.
Right, the code does require us to vote on this, so we do need a motion in order to vote.
Correct.
Trustee Tanalia.
I need to read all this?
Well, I need...
I don't know what this is.
Oh, no, that's something else. Never mind.
Didn't give us a cheat sheet.
All right. Well, I, I'll just wing it then. I would move tonight to accept the recommendation of our village attorney, Hart Passman, with regard to the, his determination on the, the, the...
The complaint.
Complaint is the word I was looking for.
And...
To take...
Direct that no further action be taken.
And then no further action will be necessary.
Good enough.
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion by Trustee Tanalia, seconded by Trustee Shirley. I do want to give the opportunity for the audience to comment, and I do have three blue cards, and so first is Keith Moons. And again, you're reminded of the three-minute time limit.
Very good. Thank you, thank you all, President Hayes. Our village attorney's full recommendation here, President Hayes, is there is no violations, but also to correct the candidate's committee filing records. That's his full recommendation. So if we accept his recommendation, our candidate has to go back and fix the ISBE to show not just the Bly letter, but also the GOP in-kind contribution. I'm happy to hear her say that she did fix the Bly, although I have not seen it. I just checked when it came over here. It still looks like it's there violating our code. It's still unbelievable to me that it took a resident's complaint to get any clarity about these obvious campaign violations from the candidate. Both letters that she submitted by the candidate as a response to that resident complaint admitted there were errors made when posting those entries. There were mistakes made. We all make mistakes. I, I'm not coming on that, because we make a mistake, President Hayes, we fix them, and we move forward. And so it doesn't seem that this candidate has such, why does she have such difficulty in just amending her or making notes to her ISBE to look like, and at least take away the appearance, that she violated our municipal code? And I mean for both entries, for the Bly and the GOP in-kind contribution. If you, as a board, allow those to stay on there for perpetuity, people can look back and say, oh, look, someone here got preferential treatment from our Board of Trustees and ignored our Arlington Heights municipal code. Finally, these errors, all of them, that she admitted to, that were honest mistakes, and I agree with that, they were honest mistakes, need to be corrected right now and put into the motion to put a time on when they can be corrected. At least put a note there so that when we look at it, we can see that there was, there was a reason for it. If there's a reason for the Bly, there has to be a reason for the GOP. Simply amend your ISBE committee, and then you're in compliance. I don't see what's so hard about that. Please ensure the candidate amends her committee now or very soon in order to remove those obvious campaign contribution errors. Thank you, President Hayes.
All right, just to correct what you just said, Mr. Moons, the recommendation from the village attorney is that Ms. Hunter file amended reports with the ISBA, ISBE as necessary. And so you can sit down, Mr. Moons.
Well, I'm going to respond to you.
No, you can sit down, please. You've had your three minutes.
Well, no, I mean, you're responding to me now, and that's not what, what, what...
Well, you've had your three minutes, and that's what it says. So next is Renee Schlenhart.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Pardon me, I don't do this very often, so just, just wanted to come speak as a 11-year resident of Arlington Heights, been in the suburbs since 2007. And part of the reason that my family moved out here was because we wanted more balance. We lived in the city. We didn't feel very represented, and we literally saw Mount Prospect in Arlington Heights because it was very balanced back when we moved out here. And now, unfortunately, what we see, from, from my point of view, is a, a lack of balance. And part of the problem, from my own observation, is situations like this, where a complaint, a baseless complaint is made, the person does comply and provide the proof that the complaint has no merit, and then it's decided and reported that it's unsustained, which, correct me if I'm wrong, that means it doesn't have merit. And then this individual then is getting asked to take additional steps when she did nothing wrong. So what it looks like to someone like me and other people I know who I've talked to about running for local races, not just this one, but other local races, it has a chilling effect, is what it does. I've seen other complaints, attempts to pull people off ballots, and what I always loved about Arlington Heights is that we're the village of good neighbors. And when I see things like that, it makes me question that, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Right, thank you, Ms. Schlenhart. Next is Christina Crucius.
Thank you, Mayor Hayes, Board of Trustees. I, the, the part I would like to emphasize here, oh, I am a, and I am a lifelong resident of the village. The village campaign contribution ordinance was written with an aim of both minimizing both the actual and the appearance of impropriety. I do not believe that has been sufficiently fulfilled yet. I believe, I, I have also looked at, when I first looked at this, I didn't understand, it very much looked like there, something wasn't quite right. We can, we, and we, we need this to be corrected on both contributions. This matters because we hold our, our elected officials to a high standard. We want to make sure they're all following the rules, every single candidate, every single elected official. And with that in mind, I think it is important to hold Ms. Hunter accountable to fixing any, or clarifying, shall we say, any perceived mistakes or what, where there might appear to be a conflict of interest on the Illinois State Board of Elections website, to ensure that there is not even the appearance of impropriety. I believe that, I believe something along those lines is written into our ordinance. I would ask that this be done swiftly. One other thing, just on a procedural note, it confuses me a little bit that Ms. Hunter was given an unlimited amount of time to speak and respond, and yet the complaint of Mr. Moons was not. So I, I would appreciate some clarification on that. But my main point, let us, let, let us make sure that we hold Ms. Hunter accountable to updating the Illinois State Board of Elections website for both contributions so that we, there is not even the appearance of impropriety. Thank you.
Right, thank you, Ms. Crucius. Anybody else in the audience wish to address the board on this agenda item? Seeing none, I'll come back to the board. We have a motion and a second. Trustee Bertucci.
Hey, I just want to check in with Hart, our village attorney, in reference to what's the motion that says to take your recommendation. Are we putting that Ms. Hunter needs to do something because you, because of your, with the way you're, explain to me your recommendation and how it pertains to the motion.
Ultimately, it's the motion that, that controls, of course. My recommendation is just a recommendation.
Okay, so what, so what was our motion?
I, I understood the motion to be to accept the report, concur with it, and direct that no further action be taken. I think that's the, the phrase.
Okay, so that, just that no further action be taken?
My, I, I, I will note, since I think this is kind of pregnant behind your comment, Trustee Bertucci.
Yeah.
It is my, my determination, and it's just my professional opinion, that there was, that there was no violation.
Yeah.
If there's no violation, there is no, you can, you can impose a, a consequence or remedy when there is a violation to, to be remedied. I, I don't believe there is one. It is my recommendation that, you know, as necessary or as practicable, the steps be taken. I've heard Ms. Hunter, and again, it's not my place here to, to say I agree or disagree with what can or should be done at the state board level. That's, that's far beyond my purview. So my, my ultimate finding was, I don't think there's a violation here. I think it would be a good thing if it's corrected, but that is, in many ways, that's beyond the scope of what I can do. And if the board finds that there is no violation, then there is no remedy to be imposed, per se.
Sure, sure. Okay. I, I just want to be clear, and that's the motion.
But just in response to that, it's my finding at least, and I believe the motion supports that Ms. Hunter has taken remedial actions as necessary, and I'm satisfied with her explanation. Trustee Tanalia.
And as the motion maker, I just want to make it clear, I'm going with what our legal experts are recommending here on this. I have no opinion on this, and I'm not suggesting that one answer is better than the next. My, I'm relying fully on Mr. Passman's recommendation and his review of this. And so that's why I said it, how I said it. If there were, if, if you felt that there was something that needed to be done at the state level, I would, I would imagine you would say so. And if you, on the other hand, feel that the state has been made whole and everything is as correct as it needs to be, then I have no reason to think it, that it should be different than that. Am I, am I missing anything?
No, it's, I'll slice through that, Trustee Tanalia. It's, I, I have no opinion on what should be done at the state level. It's, it's not, enforcement of the state's campaign filing requirements is not within the purview of this ordinance, and it's beyond the purview of my office.
So let me add one more thing. As, as we as a board, so often have we have these kinds of discussions about any topic, any situation, whether it's an approval of a project or what have you, these minutes are written up and forever logged into our files, right?
As far, as far as I can.
And so if it were ever to become an issue, Mr. Recklos, anybody could research these minutes, read them, and see exactly what was explained and why, why Mr. Passman's review was, presented the way it was, and why this vote was made the way it might go here, however it ends up being, the minutes will always be on file to review.
Everything that, that any of the members of the board, anything that you all said, anything that Mr. Passman said, anything that Mr. Moons or any of the members of the public or Ms. Hunter said are all on the public record, yes.
Yeah. And Mr. Moons' complaint is understandable. All of this stuff, on its first glance, is a little scary. I can admit that. When I read what I read, I was, I was like, wow, really? Is that what happened? But it, things happen, and sometimes they're not exactly what they appear to at first. So tonight's a great example of how it works, how it should work. And I'm thankful that both sides were here to get it taken care of and get it out in the open. So I'm comfortable with what it is, and I'm really glad that we're talking about it, and it'll be forever in the minutes. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Trustee Grassi.
I, I just would like to make a comment, just for the record, Ms. Hunter, too. I don't believe that anything was done intentionally. I, I don't at all. I think that, as Trustee Tanalia was, was saying, I think that because there were two differences in, in your campaign, that what would have been appropriate in the state representative campaign did not apply for the trustee, and by appearances, it looked to be incorrect and wrong. I take you at your word that it was not intentional. I, I believe that you're in good faith in correcting the Bly statement, and, and I do think, and my opinion is, I, I would agree with, with the recommendation from the council, that it, it would be a good thing if it's corrected just for appearances' sake. But I just want to say for the record that I, I do not believe that you did anything wrong intentionally.
Yeah. All right. Trustee Bertucci.
Just, the last thing, what I would just want to make a point of is, Ms. Hunter is a big girl. She's an attorney. There is, appears to be two different ways that she can approach this, and she's choosing to do this. She knows what her, which, you know, she feels comfortable with what she's doing, so I think we should just take it to a vote and leave it at that.
Trustee Dunnington.
Thank you. My concern is that, I, I understand that it's not a mistake that was made. My concern is that if someone looks back at this record on the website, they're not going to look at our minutes and not realize what, what this situation is. And so if it's not corrected on the Illinois State Board of Elections website, it's not going to be obvious what the issue was, and that anybody looking back, it's going to look like the ordinance was actually violated. So I, I would move to amend that Ms. Hunter does fix, not that it is a mistake, but I would move to amend that her committee, her committee's filing records to the Illinois State Board of Elections with the corrected information by March 10, 2025.
I'd second that.
There's a motion, a second to amend. I would wholeheartedly disagree with that amendment. I mean, she said that she has no requirement to do that. I don't know that you're an expert in the state finance disclosure laws where you can direct that she needs to do that. So I would not, I don't feel comfortable telling a candidate that she has to do that under the current state law. I have no expertise in that to say that she needs to do that. And if she says she doesn't need to do it, you know, I believe her. She's taken the corrective action that she needs to take, I think. So are there any other comments on the amendment? Let's take a vote on the amendment. Roll call.
Okay. Was Trustee Grassi the second on that one?
Yes.
I didn't hear. Okay, I'm sorry. Trustee Dunnington.
Yes.
Trustee Grassi.
Yes.
Trustee Tanalia.
No.
Trustee Schwengback.
No.
Okay. Trustee Labadz.
No.
Trustee Baldino.
Yes.
Trustee Bertucci.
No.
And President Hayes.
No. Let's vote on the main motion. Take a roll call, please.
Trustee Shirley.
Trustee Shirley, I was just going to point, I'm sorry.
No.
Okay.
Ridiculous, no.
Take a vote on the main, no, let's take a vote on the main motion, please, and let's end this.
Okay, Trustee Tanalia. Trustee Shirley.
Yes.
Trustee Dunnington.
No.
Trustee Schwingback.
Yes.
Trustee Labetz.
Yes.
Trustee Baldino.
Yes.
Trustee Grassi.
Yes.
Trustee Bertucci.
Yes.
President Hayes.
Yes. Motion passes. The village attorney's recommendation is accepted, and no further action will be taken.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, we move on in the agenda. Under New Business, to Item B. That's a request for a sign variation for Golf VX located at 644 East Rand Road. The request is for a variation to Chapter 30 to allow three wall signs where two wall signs are allowed, and a variation from Chapter 30 to allow a wall sign that's larger than the zero square foot allowance. So is the petitioner present? Come on forward, if you would. Hi. Just introduce yourself, and again, tell us what you're looking to do here.
Yes, we have had a two sign already up on our business. But our business is angled in a corner where our main sign, it's in the corner, so it doesn't really show on both of our roads, whereas Palatine and, one is on Willow and one, actually, we have three, three streets, right? Willow, Rand, and, oh, Willow, Palatine, and Rand. So since our main entrance is in the corner of our building, they can't see the main sign unless you come in through the Rand. So the Palatine, you have no idea that we're there. So we're requesting another third sign to be able to visualize, or for customers to be able to see that we're there. Otherwise, it looks really vacant, and it's been a vacant for a while. So our customers has been asking, we thought you guys were not here or closed, so we had to request for a third sign to be a little bit more visual for our customers, and to light up a little further to make it a little bit alive in that area.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Radman.
Thank you. As the petitioner indicated, they are here this evening for consideration of two variations from the zoning code for the property that's located at 644 East Rand Road. This is the location. You can see in the circle that is Golf VX's current location in the South Point Shopping Center. This is a little closer up view of their space. Floor and decor is located to the north, and in the southeast there, that's the At Home Store location. You can see the two signs located on the south and southwest are the existing sign faces. And then on the west wall is the area that the petitioner indicated that does not have a sign. And when their patrons are coming in from the north, from Palatine Road, and they drive into the center, it just looks like a blank wall currently. This shows you kind of what the space looks like if you're facing the entrance, which is on an angle facing southwest. And this is the proposed sign on that west face. So this chart just illustrates for you the existing sign surface area that they have. They actually have less wall sign surface than they are allowed by code for the two signs that are permitted by the current code. So the third sign does fall. It is a variation because it's more than zero allowed by the code. But if this were a sign that were permissible, it is still smaller than the code would allow. The Design Commission considered this application at the February 11th meeting, and they did unanimously recommend approval of these two sign variations to allow the third wall sign and to allow the 44.54 square foot wall sign. So the motion that's before the board this evening is up on the screen. It's to direct staff and the village attorney to prepare final documents approving this request.
Thank you, Ms. Radman. Well, I think this makes a lot of sense. You know, you have a very unique building there, and we want to make sure that you're as successful as possible. I think you've got a great business, and we want to ensure that you're successful, and we want to be business friendly here in our community. So I would certainly support this recommendation and the Design Commission motion. So, Trustee Tanalia.
Thanks, Mayor Hayes. For exactly the same reasons that Mayor Hayes just spoke, and added to the fact that this space has been, this entire center has been a challenge since day one. I'm just so thrilled that you're there, and I am so excited that you're going to be successful.
I hope so.
Been there, it's fabulous. If you haven't been there, you need to go. It's really great. So I would like to make the motion when it's ready, when it's appropriate.
Well, go ahead.
Okay, I'd like to move to direct staff and the village attorney to prepare final documents approving the requested relief for consideration at a future board meeting for DC number 24-092. Approval to allow the following sign variations from Chapter 30 of the municipal code. Number one, a variation from Chapter 30, Section 30-402A, number to allow three wall signs where only two wall signs are allowed. Number two, a variation from Chapter 30, Section 30-403A, dimensions to allow a 44.54 square foot wall sign on the west wall of the building where none are allowed now. Subject two, Condition one and Condition two as laid out in our packet.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Tanalia, second by Trustee Schwingback. Other questions or comments from the board? Trustee Grassi.
I just want to thank you for bringing your business here and doing this. It makes perfect sense, and it just looks best to have that extra sign there. So thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Anything in the audience seeing none? We have a motion and a second. All who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations. Continued good luck to you.
Thank you.
We do have one other item under New Business, and that is a resolution approving the First Amendment to an agreement with TY Lin Great Lakes, Inc., formerly Sam Schwartz, for vehicular traffic and parking analytical services for the redevelopment of Arlington International Racecourse. Mr. Recklaus, you want to introduce this?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Back in September of 2022, which seems like a long time ago now, the Village Board approved an agreement with Sam Schwartz LLC to conduct reviews of traffic and parking studies to be submitted by the Chicago Bears Football Club for their proposal for a new sports and entertainment district, including an NFL stadium on the former Arlington Park site. While those studies were started back in 2022, the Bears paused them in 2023 due to disputes over the short and long-term property taxes for the site. As you well know, a few weeks back in December, the Village Board and School Districts 15 to 11 and 214, and the Bears, all executed a memorandum of understanding that resolved the open issues related to property taxes. On February 13th, the Cook County Board of Review certified the assessment of the property outlined in the memorandum of understanding. And a week later, the Bears sent the village a letter to us indicating that they have resumed their traffic and economic impact studies, and begun developing an updated concept plan for the Arlington Park site. Staff believes it is now necessary to reengage with our consulting team so that all of this information can be properly vetted and evaluated. These studies are going to be crucial to determine the economic and financial viability of the project, and identify a plan for the infrastructure needed to support it. Among other things, the club's traffic study will analyze new anticipated traffic patterns and volumes caused by their development concept, the capacity of existing roadways to support new traffic, and will identify any new infrastructure needed to make the project possible. The village's consultant team will review their studies to ensure that we agree with their assumptions and methodology, and that all infrastructure impacts needed to support the project are included in the analysis. As per the 2022 pre-development agreement that the club entered into with the village, the club will be reimbursing the village for its expenses for these peer-reviewed studies. Since 2022, Sam Schwartz has been purchased by TY Lin, so an updated agreement is needed to, with them, to move forward. While the village continues to work with the Chicago Bears Football Club on these issues, it's important to stress that there is still much work to be done to determine if an NFL stadium sports and entertainment district is feasible, desirable, and would be beneficial to the community on this site. These studies are a very important step in that process. And so staff recommends approval of a resolution authorizing execution of the First Amendment with the TY Lin Group LLC for vehicular traffic and parking analytical services for the redevelopment of the Arlington International Racecourse property. I do want to point out also that there was a very minor change made to the documents online earlier today. You all were sent that. All it related to is how TY Lin wanted to characterize the change from Sam Schwartz to TY Lin. It did not relate to the contract itself. Happy to answer any questions.
Well, thank you, Mr. Recklaus. I just wanted to echo your comments that this is a, just another step, but it's a very important step that will allow us to get a little bit further down the road to our own exploration of this possibility. So I'm very happy to begin, really, our due diligence with these studies as soon as possible so that we can, again, make a determination on behalf of our residents, this community, whether or not a Chicago Bears stadium in the Village of Arlington Heights would be a good thing for us. And so, again, yet to be determined, but we have a lot of work to do. And so I'm very happy that we're at this point in the process, and I'm very encouraged about where we're at in the process. But again, as you said, we still have a long way to go. But I'm certainly wholeheartedly in favor of this staff recommendation. Trustee Tanalia.
Thanks, Mayor Hayes. Randy, one, one really important thing that I really want to make sure everybody at home hears. Who is paying for this?
We will be reimbursed for the cost of these studies by the Chicago Bears Football Club.
That's exactly right. One of the wonderful things that we as a group accomplished here was, we were able to, two years ago or so, make certain that the petitioner, in this case, the Bears, submitted, I think, something like a quarter of a million dollars into an account for escrow for these kinds of studies. Am I correct on that?
Yeah, it was initial, initial deposit into escrow, kind of $150,000, and it can be replaced as new expenses are incurred.
So that, that fund, it's all there for us to get this stuff done. It's not coming out of our tax dollars pockets, and we'll work together with this petitioner to make sure it's fabulous, right?
Yep.
Fabulous, thank you.
Okay, other comments from the board? Trustee Bertucci.
Thank you. So Randy, one of the questions that I think is out there, because I know I often get it, get asked, is the timeline for our study, and then also for the Bear study. What can you share about that?
Not much at this point. Once we receive the traffic studies, we'll immediately, you know, if this agreement is, is approved, begin working with them on reviewing it, seeing if our consultants agree with the methodology, see, you know, work on the scope of that, if we think the scope of what was done needs to be expanded. Any supplemental studies that may need to be done, which is also provided for in this agreement. And so this will be a conversation. Obviously, making sure that the infrastructure created to manage traffic and parking is sufficient is a major issue, is part of our consideration. And so it's something we want to make sure we do thoughtfully. And so there isn't a timeline on this, per se. It's more, what's it going to take to do this right?
Yeah, which obviously I think everybody wants. Can you just give me a, I mean, are we talking the, you know, summer, the end of the year? Are we talking late spring?
I couldn't, you know, it, I think the, it's the worst answer I can give you, but it's an excellent, is it depends.
Okay, all right.
So we're going to work as expeditiously as we can to make it an efficient process and a transparent process. But, but we just, not knowing what we're going to be getting, we can't say at this point.
Okay, fair enough. And again, the reason why I'm asking is because I'm getting asked, and when I, I will relay that same message. And I appreciate your, your answer.
Trustee Schwingback.
Thank you. I had all my questions answered. I don't mind putting the motion on the floor.
Go ahead, please.
I would move to approve a resolution authorizing execution of the First Amendment to agreement with TY Lin Great Lakes Incorporated, formerly Sam Schwartz, for vehicular traffic and parking and analytical services for the redevelopment of the Arlington International Racecourse property. Second.
Motion by Trustee Schwingback, second by Trustee Baldino. Further questions or comments from the board? Trustee Labetz.
Thank you. And Manager Recklaus, there will also be something similar coming along with regard to the other consultant?
Yes, the other, the other element to this is looking at the financial and economic impact, which is obviously important as well. We're still working out the details of that with, for a consulting group on that, and that'll be coming very soon as well.
Okay, thank you.
All right, if nothing else, any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, this is a resolution, so a roll call.
Trustee Schwingback.
Yes.
Trustee Baldino.
Yes.
Trustee Dunnington.
Yes.
Trustee Bertucci.
Yes.
Trustee Tanalia.
Yes.
Trustee Grassi.
Yes.
Trustee Labetz.
Yes.
Trustee Shirley.
Yes.
President Hayes.
Yes. Anything from the village manager?
Nothing further.
Anything from the board under petitions and communications? Trustee Grassi.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I, I just wanted to share, I'm approaching the end of my four-year term here as a village trustee, and I just want to, to say how grateful I am and honored to have served the people and businesses in this village these, these past years. From the very beginning of my term in '21, and again in '23, I urged the board to consider adopting a code of ethics and conduct for elected and appointed officials. One that would provide transparency and affirm our commitment to serve the public with integrity. A clear public code of conduct and ethics, signed by those entrusted with representing the people, would serve as both a safeguard and a promise that we place the common good above personal interests, that we lead with accountability, and that we uphold the trust our community deserves. A community thrives when its leaders set a standard of honesty, responsibility, and service to all. And I just wanted to publicly ask the board to consider one more time to have a conversation about putting in place a code of conduct and ethics for our elected leaders and appointed commissioners. Thank you.
Trustee Bertucci had something.
Just an announcement, and the village today put out the Sounds of Summer schedule. So spring is in the air. It may not officially be spring, but spring is in, summer are right around the corner. So I encourage everyone to look at that schedule and pick your favorite bands, and put it on your calendar for a save the date.
All right, anything further from the board? Seeing, Trustee Dunnington, go ahead.
Just in response, I would wholeheartedly agree with ethics statement for the board and for the commissions as well.
Well, in response, I would disagree, because it, that implies that we need one. And the, the history of this board, at least on the 34 years that I've been on this board, is anything but that we need a code of ethics, a code of honor, because we adhere to that. We've got a reputation that I'll stand behind, behind any community in this Chicagoland area for honesty, sincerity, transparency, you name it. We've never had any problems whatsoever in terms of people accusing us of being anything but honest and professional and transparent. And I don't think we need a code of ethics or code of conduct. We enforce that internally amongst ourselves, and we've done that very well over the past 34 years. Trustee Schwingback.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I'd, I'd like to just ask Trustee Grassi. I don't think you're, you're not implying that, are you?
Not at all. I, I asked for this in '21 when I first was elected to the board.
I mean, I, I'm sensing that you, you want a discussion, I mean, I, I'm sensing that you, you want a discussion, not necessarily for this board, but just, isn't it just to maybe have something for future boards?
I, I think it's an important conversation. A code of conduct and ethics is a common code that a number of cities and villages do have throughout our country. And it's not to be punitive, it's just to ensure that those people who are elected or appointed are promising to the, to do, do common good versus personal, to prioritize the common good versus their own personal agendas.
Yeah, because I, I'm not sensing that you're thinking anything.
Not at all, no.
I mean, I certainly, I certainly wouldn't mind discussing it if that's what you're, you're asking for. At a, it's, are you wanting to discuss it at some future meeting, or?
I would be open to that, you know, even a committee of the whole. That is what I've asked from the beginning. I, I just think it's something good to, to, we have a basic code of ethics. I, I just think it's something that would be good to have.
Any further questions or comments from the board? Trustee Shirley.
Just, I, I guess I'm confused, because who's going to judge whether or not someone's intentions are personal or for the common good? I don't, I don't understand how that's going to be adjudicated or judged. It seems to me like we're getting into the arena of trying to figure out what people are thinking. And I just think that's kind of dangerous. And I also think, doesn't state law cover Mr. Passman, like illegal activities and things that we're not allowed to do by law? Aren't there, you know, requirements of elected officials? You can't take bribes, you can't, I, I don't know, aren't laws?
There are, there are, yes, Trustee Shirley, there are some state statutes that do, obviously prohibiting bribery, but to limit elected, local municipal official involvement in contract work or business of the municipality. So there are, there are some state laws to that effect, yes.
I mean, I wouldn't mind having a discussion, but I just think we're kind of, we've got to be a little careful that we're not trying to police people's thoughts or to make judgments about their actions and assign intentions to those.
Well, I.
That's, that's kind of dangerous to me.
Right.
I just don't think that we should be in that business.
Yeah, and, and certainly if the new board, you know, there's going to be, perhaps half the members of the board are going to be turning over approximately. And if they want to take it up, that's their purview. But I don't think we should try to cram something in in the next two months when I don't, I'm not sensing that there's a majority consensus to do so. And I don't, certainly don't believe there's a need. So any further comments? If not, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.